Hi, I'm Chris Ball, Executive Director of Mashpee TV. Welcome to the Select Board Candidate Discussion. With me today are Michaela Wyman-Columbo and David Whedon, two members of our current Select Board who are running for reelection on Saturday, May 6th, as part of our town elections. As there are two seats open and only two candidates running, our guests today, in reality, are running unopposed. In light of that fact, we thought that instead of our usual debate forum, we would run a roundtable-type discussion with our candidates to talk about critical issues facing our town today. I wish to first thank David and Michaela for taking the time to join us and share their thoughts. Now let's introduce them before we get to the topics at hand. Michaela, would you like to start by telling us about yourself?
Sure. Thanks, Chris, and to Mashpee TV for hosting this conversation between Select Board David Whedon and me. And thank you, David, and to the residents of Mashpee. I'm Michaela Wyman-Columbo, and I'm running for reelection to the Select Board. I initially was elected just seven months ago. I ran at that time because I love Mashpee, its natural resources, its cultural and historical wealth, and also its small-town feel. I also ran because I believe Mashpee is at a tipping point. Our lack of water quality is getting more and more severe, and there's less and less housing for working-class folks and low-income people. These are complex and challenging issues. They require leadership, problem-solving, and experience with addressing complexity. I believe I bring those qualities to the Board. I've given 100% to Mashpee during these past seven months. I've worked within the town, with the town management staff and different boards, and of course, on the Select Board, and I've worked beyond the town with leaders throughout the Cape to explore opportunities and solutions for the problems we face. I've been actively engaged in professional organizations from municipal leaders and have met with many residents to discuss their insights, ideas, and concerns. I look forward to giving 100% of the next three years to address the challenges that we face. I look forward to working with you, the residents of Mashpee. Thank you.
Thanks, Michaela. David, tell us about yourself.
Kui kwaasen, natasawis wina taanane, newtomas Mashpee Wampanoag. Hello, everyone. In our tradition, we first introduce ourselves in our native language, so what I've said is hello, everyone. My name is David Whedon. I'm a Mashpee Wampanoag. I'm from Mashpee and a part of Mashpee. It has been my privilege and honor to serve as a member of the Select Board for the past three years. I am seeking your support of my candidacy for reelection on the Mashpee Select Board. Over the past several years, I have been committed to working tirelessly for the betterment of our town and its people. I have worked diligently to promote responsible and sustainable development while preserving the unique natural and cultural resources that make Mashpee such a special place. I have also been a strong, balanced advocate for the interests of the Mashpee Wampanoag tribal members and all residents of the town of Mashpee. As a Mashpee Wampanoag tribal member, culturally, we are natural stewards of this land. So these are my priorities in securing the sustainable development as it relates to the impacts on our water and cultural resources while providing adequate and equitable housing for the residents of Mashpee and the larger Cape region. As I seek a second term on the Select Board, I'm more committed than ever to continuing this important work. With your support, I'm confident that we can build on the progress we have made and continue to make Mashpee an even better place to live, work, and raise our families. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you both. Let's get started with some topics, some questions, and mainly, I'm just going to let you inform us and educate us. I mean, to me, as a resident of Mashpee and all that's going on, I think the most important thing, in my view, that's going on right now is our water quality. So I'd like you guys to tell us everything from, I know, shellfishing, not shellfish, but oysters helping to clean the water, to sewers, to buffer zones, and everything in between. What we're doing, how long it's going to take for us to see some results, and why should everybody care about this? And why is it important to all of us? So if you could have a discussion, you should be take a turn at it and tell us, you know, tell us what's going on. I don't care who starts, but...
I know for me, you know, my grandfather raised his family on, as a commercial fisherman, and as well as so many other tribal members in the town of Mashpee and other non-tribal member, folks that live within the Cape Cod region. You know, a lot of the areas, it's not unique to Mashpee, this problem. I think it's a Cape-wide problem, and you know, you hear folks at the Cape Cod Commission often talk about a blue economy, and it's hard to fathom what that looks like if we continue to ignore the current status of our waters. And, you know, the Cape has developed rapidly over several years and decades, and it lacked the infrastructure when they were building out the Cape as a region. And so now, we can't continue on the same path without acknowledging our past mistakes, addressing those in an effective way that isn't further strapping the people's affordability to live here on the Cape. There's a lot of generational folks that have lived here for generations and call this place home, and not all are affluent and are able to withstand the high cost of living as it rises. And in order to keep it affordable, we have to be smart in our approach as to addressing these wastewater infrastructure problems. You know, the bays used to thrive with various types of life. Scallops are essentially gone from the Cape and much of the Cape, the upper Cape, anyway, and eelgrass is gone. That's very sensitive to nutrient loads, and so it was an early indicator. You know, some of the other types of shellfish and things, they don't thrive unless they're propagated. So we have to do our part in addressing those things. Some of the other areas of concern are the nutrient loads on our freshwater bodies. I want to make sure that we're not just hyper-focused on the bays and embankments, but also look at the freshwater quality, water quality as well. You know, all these natural environments are what make Mashpee and the Cape special, and they're a huge asset, because that's a term that folks are familiar with using. You know, in our way, they're considered gifts culturally, and so we have an obligation through our tribal culture informs us that, you know, we have to ensure that things are there for seven generations and not leave lasting impacts on those things. So, you know, I try to bring my culture to every decision and make decisions that my ancestors and both my future generations will be proud of in addressing those things.
I appreciate everything that you've said, and I think you hit on some of the major, major issues, probably from a slightly different perspective than I can have, but I appreciate and agree with what you've said. I think that our groundwater is just loaded with nitrogen. We've reached a point, as you mentioned, we've built, and you can't be Monday morning quarterback, I understand, but we've built without building the infrastructure for that building. So we continue to pollute our bays, we continue to pollute our ponds and our rivers. And the difference over the past, just the past five or six years, the noticeable difference is really concerning. Typically, it should take 10 or 20 or 30 years to see the difference we've seen just in the past year or two. I don't think any of us can deny anymore that it's a huge problem, and it's a huge problem for all of the KPS, but it's a huge problem for Mashpee. We have beautiful natural resources. I mean, the Mashpee River is a treasure, and it's in dire straits. It's screaming for help right now, and we need to work collectively to find multiple pieces, multiple, it's a puzzle, right? The sewer's going to help. We need to find multiple ways of dealing with our water issues. Shellfish and propagating the shellfish is going to be helpful, and I know we've been doing that for a while, and it's made a difference, but clearly, it's insufficient. There's just all that nitrogen. So I think looking at things like buffer zones is a small piece. Regulating fertilizer use is another small piece, and those are no-cost pieces that we can, we can do right away. I thought it was really interesting when we watched a presentation at the Select Board meeting, and one of the consultants was talking about the quality of the water in the ponds and actually pointed out to us that as soon as you sewer around those ponds, the phosphorus is going to stop. And I thought that was a promising piece of information that the consultant gave us. Then it's getting the sewer around the ponds. I think as we're waiting for searing or thinking about alternative methods to use, we could be looking at the new IA systems who, that are getting better and better about taking phosphorus out. They're not ready yet, but they'll be ready. I think we should also be open-minded to recycling and urine-diverting toilets that help recycle both phosphorus and nitrogen, and how much less, how much water they save, which is another big piece. So I think there are a lot of things we can think about and talk about, and I think one of the important things about having this conversation regularly is we get to share those ideas.
I guess I'd just add that, you know, we really valued the late, great Brian Howes and the UMass Dotmans SMS program, and the information that he would provide on an annual basis, you know, he annually came in and presented the state of our waters, and he effectively communicated that, you know, our bays are becoming eutrophic, they're dying. And, you know, recently, most recently, the Mashpee and Quashnet Rivers were listed as two of the most contaminated rivers on Cape Cod. You know, that's, that's changed in just my lifetime. I'm 51 years old, and, you know, back 50 years ago, those were pristine environments. So, you know, I think we have to take it serious, and we have to recognize that regulations to date have failed us in preserving those and protecting those things. And so, you know, the work that Falmouth is doing and some of the other surrounding communities, you know, the environment is a, something that society's becoming more consciously aware of, and it's long overdue, it's welcome, it is very complex, there's a lot of different intricacies in doing it right and doing it in an effective way. And I look forward to working with Michaela and others on the Mashpee Select Board and other departments and programs within the town structure to effectively address the problems and think creatively outside of the box. You know, one takeaway that I had from Brian Howes' presentations was that if we do something to clean up the rivers now, the river could essentially correct itself and fix itself in roughly 10 years. The Quashnet was going to take a little longer just because of the way the river flows and some of the kind of geography and topography and hydrology of the river. You know, 10 years is incorrigible. You know, I look forward to seeing the fruition of our efforts, clean up the rivers in my lifetime. The Quashnet, I'm not giving up. I'd like to try to, you know, effectively address that watershed as well, and also the ponds that they stem from.
That's an important point with regard to the Quashnet because it impacts all of Okway Bay, and Okway Bay is still, I mean, we hope all our waters are salvageable, but Okway Bay still does have, doesn't have any more eelgrass, but it has, it has more life in it, it's less eutrophic than Popanesset Bay. So to be able to work on both of those watersheds, I think, is critical.
Can I just jump in with a question to you both? You know, I've looked at the warrant coming up for town meeting. There's a lot of articles there addressing water quality. A lot of people sit there and go, whoa, you know, everything from raisin replays to buffer zones, and they're going to go, wow, that's a lot for one chunk. In your opinions, and I know they're all important, every one of these things, but what will do the most for us the quickest, beside the sewer? We all know about the sewer, but in our opinion, what is the most important thing we can accomplish at town meeting on any of these articles?
All right. So I know you said you know the sewer, but I think it's important to note that that is on, it is an article at town meeting, and we need to think about that and ensure that we have that $12 million to complete the work that's done, the alternatives that have been put into...
That's Phase 1, right?
...the wastewater plant? Yes, yes, because we're putting in more tanks, which will be cost-effective in the long run, and as we know, the price of everything and supply, with supply and demand continues to grow.
So just to jump in a second, so to complete Phase 1, we need $12 million above the original $54. Am I correct on that?
It's the smarter thing to do to, if you're going to build now, the cost of construction as well as supply chain, costs have gone up and they continue to go up, you can anticipate them continuing to go up. So, you know, instead of doing a retrofit later, putting in larger capacity of tanks and things now is going, it's just a smarter way to do it when you're initially developing the wastewater treatment facility.
So what you're both saying is this is going beyond Phase 1, this is getting ready for further phases, this additional 12. Have I got that right?
It's preparing the treatment plant itself for additional.
Because I don't think everybody understands.
It's not so much lines that you're going to target additional areas as you're bolstering the capacity of the treatment plant to do a more effective job down the road as you address additional phases.
Okay. Thank you. I understand now. Michaela interrupted you, I'm sorry.
So, so I just didn't want us to forget the sewer is on the town...
No, and it's a great point.
...is on the town warrant, and that's, that's a big price tag item, completely necessary, and it makes sense, given the rising cost of everything, but it's an important one. What's interesting about the other articles is there are no cost. So for me, it's hard to choose just one of those. The two conservation articles go together. One increases jurisdiction from 100 feet to 150 feet, and the second one increases that naturally vegetated buffer zone, right up against the watershed or the water bodies, from 50 feet to 75 feet. So to me, that's a no-cost item that really will prevent, if you look at what Orleans found about fertilizer, I mean, you could actually keep 7% of the nitrogen out of the water by having that increased buffer zone. Using native plants, the root structure of native plants is very different from the root structure of grass or of some of the more cultivated plants that we've been putting in. So to have that naturally vegetated zone would be really, it would just be effective without costing anything.
So you're saying 7%? Or, did I hear that right?
I'm, yes. Orleans said, I'm wondering if it's 7% or 8%, but it's right around that, removing that much nitrogen by, and theirs, they found theirs with fertilizer use, but if you have that naturally vegetated buffer, it's going to absorb that to keep that from getting in the ground. And I think the Santuit Pond article is much the same. It's a no-cost article that really takes into consideration the rights of boaters to enjoy the pond, to be able to take their boats out, but it limits horsepower. So those are two things that really aren't going to cost the town anything, and that'll show a difference in water quality.
I agree with everything Michaela's just stated, and very eloquently, and, you know, supported by facts. You know, there are some that I think are painting the picture as, you know, it's going to impact or diminish your rights or things like that, but I have to stress that, you know, the things that are being proposed, they, they, they don't take away your right to build, they don't take away your ability to do what you want to do on your own personal property, but it's just ensuring that we take into consideration the natural resources that you're adjacent to and do it in a responsible way. So when you develop, you know, the wetland buffer, you'll have to, same as you do now, if you are going to do anything within those areas, then you're going to have to mitigate it, and so there'll be a give-and-take and a negotiated path forward. So, you know, it's not removing your right to do things within areas, but it is taking into consideration the current status of our water quality, and, you know, increasing wetland buffers and things will, and vegetated buffers are just, they're easy ways to try and address, and they have a huge impact. 7% is a significant amount. There are other factors like stormwater and nitrogen loads that are, come from stormwater runoff and watershed. Those things are additional areas that we have to try to address in the future, but, you know, these are just some things that are easy to do. The regulations have not changed in, you know, probably 30, 40 years, and so they, it's time to reevaluate our current regulations and try to structure them in a way where you're addressing the current issues at hand. And, you know, vegetated buffers, a lot of folks, there's, as you canoe and kayak around the Mashpee-Wakeby Lake and other areas, and everybody wants that clear line of sight to the, to the water, and it's not always in the best interest to have your lawn go right to the water's edge. And, you know, a lot of those lawns are plush green, they look like golf courses, so you know there's fertilizer being applied, and, you know, you have to maintain that vegetated buffer for the protection of the water, which is a shared resource. And, you know, increasing the wetland buffer to consider the nitrogens and the other nutrients, phosphorus and nitrogen are a result of septic's and leach fields, you know, we have to address that. And so increasing that and having potentially tighter restrictions with regards to septic systems and things moving forward is only going to help clean up the water for everyone, which is a public health interest at the end of the day.
I think an important, if I may, an important thing for people to understand is the naturally vegetated buffer does not restrict a four-foot pathway to get down to the water. People, that's completely allowable, and that will stay allowable. It also doesn't exclude any vista pruning. So if you've built a house near the water, you want to look out and see the water, the Conservation Commission will work with people on vista pruning as they have been.
And there's certain species that will, they're not necessarily going to obstruct your vista, but they'll thrive in the environment just because they're vegetated buffers and delineators between wetlands and uplands. And so, you know, if you find a company that does that specialized type of work, then I'm sure there's a variety of plants that, you know, are, people would be amicable to planting, that we can achieve both. It's not, it's not one or the other.
And if you're on the shore, property owners will actually find that they're more protected from any storm surge, so their property is going to be protected by keeping these buffers.
All right. Some great information, some great comments. I'd like to move on to housing. I look at, and I don't have specific numbers, but to me, as a citizen, I, seems to me that our Mashpee school system graduating class shrinks every year. To me, this is telling me that the number of families that stay on the Cape and are able to stay on the Cape are shrinking. And we all know that both affordable housing and workforce housing, which is critical to, you know, our economy, our tourist industries, and just our year-round industries, we've got to do something about it. So if you could address some of what we can do, what we are doing, what might be in the future, you know, I think it's a good question.
Yeah, okay.
So, you know, for me, I like to use the term equitable housing because I think it's all-encompassing. You know, I, I don't want to focus on any one demographic, you know, low-income, we know that we have, we're not anywhere near where we're supposed to be with the 10% 40B, under the 40B provision, but, you know, the workforce and middle income are two additional areas that need to be addressed. And so when we build housing, it has to be equitable to where there's a balanced approach to building. And, you know, we can't wait for the big projects all the time that are going to just build affordable housing and concentrated poverty situations. We need to be mindful of trying to develop small incremental housing, maybe look for ways in which to incentivize accessory dwelling units on existing properties if they have the sizable lot that would allow for that, which would often provide additional supplemental income to help them offset some of the tax increases that may be coming as a result of wastewater and other initiatives. So, you know, I think there's, there's ways in which to do it. 40B, I don't think is working effectively, especially in this kind of market, housing market. So, you know, it's up to us to figure out solutions that can help that. It may be applying for additional funding through federal programs to help prop up some of the housing-related agencies within the town and departments and programs, you know, trying to put more money into the housing trust and utilizing and seeing, try to encourage the Affordable Housing Authority to go after additional funding, both at the state level and federal level, I think would help as well in addressing some of those problems.
And it seems like a really good time to be looking for money at the state level. Housing is one of Governor Healey's top priorities, so this seems like a really good time to be looking for some support with both affordable and workforce housing. I learned the other day that 48% of workers on the Cape drive over the bridge every day, which is a huge number of people who are making that long trip. Not only does it make it difficult for them to work here, and I know it's more difficult on the outer Cape where they have to drive all that much further, but not only does it make it more difficult for them to work here, it interferes with services, necessary services for people who are living here. That's also an environmental mess. You have all of that traffic going back and forth on a daily basis. So I think to be looking at both, as David was saying, affordable housing, or you called it equitable housing, I think we need to ensure that we're building both of those. I think, I don't think, and as much as I know, we appreciate the summer residents, that's a big boom for our economy, they play an important role, and, and they're, they're good neighbors. I think, however, that with the water problems we have and the way our water issues really make it difficult for us to even be building, that we should focus on the type of housing that's going to keep people here, rather than on housing that very few people can afford. One of the things I think is really interesting at the state level now is Senator Seer put forward a, an act to regulate and to restrict, what you're talking about is equitable housing, I mean, 40B is restricted anyway, but looking at workforce housing, that if we're getting some support to be able to build it, to be able to restrict it to year-round residents, and I think that's a really important thing for us to think about. His bill wouldn't, his bill wouldn't mandate that we do that, but it would give us the opportunity to be able to do it within the town. That way, we're not chasing this all the time, where we're building housing and developers are coming in to buy that housing to rent it out for short-term loan, or short-term loans, short-term rentals. So I think that's something really interesting for us to think about if we really want to ensure that we build this housing and it stays at a price that's affordable for middle-class and, and lower-income people.
And with that, you know, it's not unique to Mashpee, this problem. It's not unique to even Cape Cod as a region. It's something that's going on throughout the southeastern Massachusetts and New England. So, you know, we should be at the forefront of addressing the problem, come up with creative ways to address it. Michaela's outlined a few, a few different scenarios on how to do that, and, you know, another way is... And, you know, another way is, I think it's up to the towns, within the right, there are provisions under Department of Community Development, the DHCD, rather, to where towns can do preferential, do a preference matrix on lotteries and things, on placement. And, you know, I'd like to see more housing set-asides for veterans. You know, are we doing enough for veterans? Are we doing enough for workforce? Are we doing enough for middle income? And then there's low-income restrictions already through 40B. You know, it's trying to create regulations and processes that support the most disadvantaged and the people that need the help the most. You know, the market is driven by, you know, the cost and who can afford it. You know, we have to counteract that and do it in a balanced way. That's why, you know, essence, I use the term equitable to try to address it, you know, from a holistic approach, trying to address all the needs of all the, all the folks that need the housing. And, and the transportation, that's a huge one. You know, we're, we're in a climate crisis where we're trying to transition off all the vehicles on the road and trying to create less traffic and less emission vehicles being on the road. So, you know, I think if you address one issue, then there's going to be benefits that address the larger problem as well.
And Chris, it's a quality of life issue for everyone in Mashpee and everyone on the Cape. If we don't have sufficient housing for workforce housing, or we don't have sufficient housing for our vulnerable populations, then it really interferes with how we work together as a community, regardless of means. So I think it's a quality of life question for everybody.
And there's rippling effects with, you know, a lot of the local businesses are closing and things because they can't hire the people that they need to. So, I mean, you know, every, it touches every aspect of our community, and it's not just a residential issue or people trying to find the housing, it's also the businesses need the help as well to ensure that staying open.
Well, that segues into, you know, another topic that I had, I wanted to ask you guys to address, is, you know, we know in the summer we have probably 10,000 J-1 students come in, and that's another thing. But how do we keep our youth here on the Cape? I mean, it's, to me, they're, they're moving away because they, housing, they can't afford to live here, there's not opportunity to live here, and they don't feel the part of Mashpee that I think they want to. I know the tribe is doing a tremendous job with their youth culturally and everything, and I see that through the school system, through the programs you do. And I think that we've got a great school system because we spend time up there doing games and, you know, senior projects, well, and things of that nature. We've got a great bunch of kids. How do we get them to stay? You know, and what, what can we do besides housing, you know?
One thing, one, one approach I, I see a need is the bolstering the internet and broadband capacity and bandwidth on the Cape. You know, there's areas of the Cape that they don't have fiber, they don't have broadband speed, internets and things. Internet's kind of slow because of the, the number of people on at the same time. You know, I don't know that Comcast provides the fastest and most reliable service, you know, not to bash Comcast, but, you know, having options, I think, is good. And, you know, advocating for the state to invest, you know, try to invest in bolstering the internet capacity. That'll provide for home-based business, internet-based businesses, and, you know, the young people are looking at those types of things. I think as a result of COVID, we have a lot more people that are working remotely, so that's further taxing the bandwidth of the Cape internet capacity currently. And, you know, we have to, if we're going to move into the future, then it's going to require investments into internet and broadband, and, you know, the 5G and everything is a, a difficult topic because folks are unfamiliar with it and what exactly that looks like. But, you know, if there's a way to do it in a responsible way where it's not harmful to our health and our quality of life, then, you know, we, we have to look at that to try to move towards the future. Everything's, everything relies on your internet infrastructure. And I think that would allow for folks to consider living home. You know, and, and families are starting to, kids are staying home longer, they're moving back homes in some instances. And so, you know, accessory dwelling units may be a way of also addressing that, where, you know, they're not actually in the house, but they're on the property and, but the internet is, I think, bolstering internet capacity and bandwidth would be a way to, a viable solution.
Yeah. Rather than to be thinking about what we once did to create jobs, David makes a really important point. More and more jobs are online. More and more people can work exclusively online, and then businesses can be conducted online. And those are really good-paying jobs that would enable people, if we had quality workforce housing, would enable people to afford that housing and to be able to stay here. As I was saying earlier, and I just think it's important, that keeping our young people here, keeping a diverse population in all ways here, just adds to quality of life for everybody. It makes a community more vibrant, it, it makes a better community for everyone involved, even people who don't have children, right? It, it changes the whole sense of community. But I think the jobs of the future are definitely jobs that are, that require connectivity and broadband connectivity.
And a lot of the future jobs, you know, they're STEM-based. So, you know, having a dynamic educational system that changes with the future job market, I think, is critical to look at, you know, renewables is the direction we're going, climate crisis, addressing those things. So that's going to require environmental jobs, you know, ecological career paths for our young people, renewables, you know, solar, solar is something that's developing industry. There, we're getting ready to go into all this offshore wind development, you know, that's going to create maritime jobs, that's going to create a lot of different other types of jobs as a result of the offshore renewable developments being done. So, you know, having programming at some of the local schools and institutions to where they could tap into some of those professional career paths, and that would allow them to stay here and live on Cape and, you know, raise their families and, and things as well.
Well, I think, you know, people that grew up here, people that came here, I mean, I came when I was 10 years old. I came, I, this is where I want to live, and I stayed. And I think for the most part, people that grow up here want to stay. But it's finding a way to do that, that you can afford to and have quality of life and bring up their children. So, you know, your points were very well taken. How about other topics? Any ideas?
Well, you're talking about youth, and one thing I think is really important, and I remember it was just after I got elected, I was talking to somebody who had been involved in town government for a while, and this person pointed out to me, or asked me, wouldn't it be nice if we were able to engage high school juniors and seniors more fully in town government so that they were more engaged? And I think that's a really important thing for us to be thinking about. I have it on my list, but I haven't, I haven't done it yet. I think to be able to get into the schools and to extend the invitation to students, as I said, particularly juniors and seniors, and let them know that it could come up earlier in their careers even, to be a liaison to the select board, to be involved in different committees in one way or another would be really, really useful. In a town I once worked, we had, the town council had a student representative who voted, and I think it, I think it really engaged other youth, and I think that might be something we should be thinking about.
Certainly makes them buy into and feel part of decision-making. I think it's a point that the select board should look at, town government should look at. I don't know how you go about it as far as, you know, having a voting member, but I think it's an idea worth considering.
I think, you know, a couple of ways in which to do that is, you know, promoting and supporting AmeriCorps program, Conservation Corps, you know, get them involved with some of the stewardship efforts that we're doing. And then also, you know, maybe even reaching, try, try to get their buy-in and insight into the local comprehensive plan, you know, especially for like seniors and juniors that are going to be becoming young adults, you know, they have a vested interest as students that grow up here. And, you know, that's, that's something else that we need to, you know, finish up. It, it's a slow process, but you want to do it right. You know, the town planner's doing a great job in soliciting public opinion of all our residents and things, and, you know, it's shaking out to be a very comprehensive document. You know, it's supposed to be updated every five years. And so, you know, by the time we get done with it, you know, it's, it'll be time to stop planning for the next round, but maybe including the, the youth of our high school in some of that, you know, to, to see that there's strategic planning and things that go into the future growth.
It's their future.
Right.
It's their future.
And to piggyback on that, you're absolutely right. The town planner has done an extraordinary job. The planning board together has worked really hard to get as many people as possible to come to meetings. They've held meetings at various times, various places, they've done meetings on-site at events, and yet still, when they look at the results of the survey, they're looking at most people who completed it being, being much older. So to be able to get youth involved in that, and maybe from the start, would be really productive, because you're right, they're the ones who are going to be living here.
And it seems like, you know, when you go to some of these public events where they're doing crowdsourcing information and input, you know, like the one on the waters and then the one on the, the local comprehensive plans and things, you actually have good turnout at all the, all the different events. But there is one common theme that, you know, it's mostly your older generations that come out and contribute.
Yeah.
So, you know, there is, we need to do something to try to reach out and, and reach the, the middle-aged crowd and demographic, as well as the young people at, through the high schools and things, would be incorrigible to get their buy-in, because right now I don't think their voices are being heard or they're not engaging.
Right.
So that their voices and input is factored in. It's predominantly older generations that are kind of trying to think about everything. And, you know, it, it would be great to have their input.
Like I said before, it's their future.
Yes.
We are approaching an hour. I think we could probably talk for a lot more, more. It's, you know, been, for me, a very enlightening and educating hour. But I think at this point, we're going to need to start talking about wrapping it up. So, you know, David, I like your final thoughts and closing statement at this time.
So, there's a few different things, and as a tribal member, you know, like I said, we have a vested interest. A lot of tribal members still live in town. I represent both tribal membership as constituents as well as non-travel. So I always try to walk a balanced path and address everyone's concern, though culturally I am raised in a cultural way to where, you know, I, I think deeply about the environment and the shared space and all the beings that live in it. So, you know, that's kind of what guides a lot of my decisions and my focus. The tribe, you know, from a tribal side, you know, the town's fortunate in having a tribe within their town boundary. You know, we bring in a substantial amount of money through grants and things that try to address some of the same issues the town's confronted with. And so, you know, I, I try to, I'd like to see and nurture that relationship between, between the tribe and the town, to where, you know, there, we have available to us federal funds, there's federal partners within the region that offer technical assistance to the tribe because of the relation, trust responsibility and relationship of the federal government and with the tribe. So, you know, nurturing that relationship is something that I, I try to do moving forward. And, you know, addressing the climate crisis is another thing, looking at mitigating some of the, through climate adaptation is another area of focus that I have. In closing, I am deeply committed to serving the people of Mashpee and to making our town an even better place to live, work, and thrive. I'm asking for your support in this important endeavor. Together, we can continue to promote responsible, sustainable development, preserve Mashpee's unique character and resources, and advocate for the interests of all residents of our town. I'm grateful for the opportunity to serve our community, and I hope to earn your trust and support as I seek a second term on the select board, and I ask for your vote on May 6. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, David. Michaela, final thoughts?
I think that, first, thank you very much, and thank you, David. And I think this format was really conducive to good conversation, and I appreciate the opportunity to participate in that. I think we've highlighted some of the major issues we confront and some of the issues that are, we're going to have to face within the next three years. I think working together, working collaboratively, having David and I work with the other select board members, I think we're making progress, and I think that's an important thing for residents to understand, that we're making progress towards reclaiming our waters, we're doing it in ways that we're trying to ensure that people who are the most impacted by the pricing of the sewers or new systems will be protected by no-cost loans or very low-cost loans, Community Development Block grant that the select board put forth money for a consultant to come in and help us write that for people who are really struggling to take care of these things we need to do. So I think those are all important things to keep in mind. We know that we need to take care of our environment, it's critical for all of us. Our environment is, is everything in Mashpee. It's our economy, it's, it's our quality of life, it's everything that matters to us. And we need to do it in ways that help people and move people along. I think in addition to that, we know we need to be working collaboratively, thoughtfully, in a problem-solving kind of way to address our housing issues, and ensuring that we're reaching out to Governor Healy to find out what kind of support we can get from, from the state, because we need that type of support. I'm grateful to have been a select board member, serving you, the residents of Mashpee, for the last seven months. I look forward to working with you collaboratively for the next three years. I hope too that I've earned your trust, and I would appreciate your vote on May 6, or during early voting or mail-in voting, but thank you so much.
Well said. Thank you, Michaela. I would like to thank you again and wish you both the best of luck in the next term, in the next three years. I'm laughing a little bit because I know it's a big job you've got ahead of you, but it's very important. Remember, voters, Election Day is Saturday, May 6, and this is the first time you will not be voting at Quashna Elementary School. This year, precincts 1 and 2 will be voting at the Mashpee Senior Center, precincts 3 and 4 at Mashpee Town Hall, precinct 5 will be at the Public Library. Polls will be open from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., so get out and vote. On behalf of Mashpee TV, David, Michaela, we all thank you for watching. Get out there and vote, we'll see you at the polls.